Jane.
It's a good question. I thought Russ was going to be on to talk about it.
I don't see him in the attendees list yet.
Um, let me just make sure.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to take the first, first one until Russ gets here? Russ is in, that Russ is there now?
Yeah, let me bring him in.
And so if Russ would like to come on and talk to us about the cannabis business license fee, that would be great.
I would love to. Good evening, everyone. So bringing back to you tonight, the ordinance 1117 to talk about the cannabis business license fee. At the council's last meeting, you had, that we discussed this, you wanted a little bit more information, what other jurisdictions have been doing. You also wanted to finish up some of your business on other cannabis related zoning issues. So with that work done, staff is bringing this back to you. You'll see one of the attachments that was provided by Toyota Strategic lists several cities in California. A range of evaluations that business license fees have been charged for those cities. Also have some aggregate fees and the staff report that show you what the potential revenue for the city is. Under current conditions at startup, that would be about $406,000 a year approaching a build out at $639,000 a year. Again, that would start as proposed at about $6 per hour and would escalate to $9 per hour. That seems to be a little bit below what's happening in California. But if you've gone through that attachment, there are lots of different conditions that, you know, different cities in California have looked at, whether it's indoor, outdoor, fluorescent lighting, different fees above certain levels. So council can definitely make recommendations to adjust this fee. And the purpose of this fee, it would go to support our code enforcement efforts, any economic development and tourism we'd like to accomplish in that area. As well as it might be a fund for some maintenance or even match for some capital projects. So with that, really just wanted to open this back up to the council, see what you think about the ordinance and make sure that your prior questions have been addressed.
Thanks, Russ. This is Angie. Were there not any comparable cities in Washington or Oregon? Or do we know?
None that I know of. I think it's a fairly new strategy.
Thanks.
Yeah, just answer that, Angie. There's, I think we would be the pioneers on this one in our little pioneer carts. For this, for Washington. Um, so, so I know I'm the one who's kind of pushed, is pushing this. As a, as a revenue source to help us out with down with the Hartford area. It's an area that we all are been scratching our heads, trying to figure out how do we clean up the Hartford area? How do we deal with the smell problems we're having down there? And how do we also clean up and help to create a better situation within the cannabis industry that's down in our, in our Hartford area? So that's why I did some research, saw what California was doing with this square footage, business license fee, and wanted to bring this in as a proposal to help us create some revenue to fix a problem using the money that has, comes from the problem. And that's cannabis. So with that, I think it's a, it's a, it'll be an interesting. It'll be interesting to see what happens if we pass this fee to the cannabis industry in Lake Stevens. So grow margins aren't that, people think that the cannabis industry is making just tons of money. And I think that in some areas they are, but within the grow arena, that's not necessarily true. So what will be interesting to see is how this will actually impact the grows that we do have in Lake Stevens. Will they be able to, to pay it? Will they be able to, in conjunction with code enforcement to clean up their operations? Be able to, to bring things up to standard that we would like to see them in Lake Stevens. So that will be interesting to see how that works out. And so will it end up being that growers can't bring their operations up to a standard that we need to have them at? And pay this fee that helps pay for that, bringing it up to standard. Um, the other discussion comes into play that does Lake Stevens, if we're going to have cannabis in Lake Stevens, do we want grows? Do we want processors? Do we want a mixture? And from my standpoint, from my viewpoint, I would much rather us move towards processors. And the reason why is processors would go into new buildings that could contain the odors that would be required to have scrubbers, air scrubbers that would, that would make sure that any any odors that go out of the building are not full of cannabis. And, and processors as well provide better jobs in the grow side. I don't know, I don't know if any of you have walked through any of our grows down in Hartford, but you, if you haven't, you need to. It's, it's not a good environment from my standpoint. So I would much rather see if we're going to keep cannabis in Lake Stevens, that we move towards more of the processing side. And that also leads into, and I think I've spoken with most of you about this, into my long game on cannabis, which is partnering with the cannabis industry to do more of a local options tax and provide more regulation and more standards within the cannabis industry so that, so that the consumer of cannabis knows what, what they're consuming. What, what, what is the product they have and what's in that product, which right now that, that industry does not have that standard, does not have that, and the consumer does not have that knowledge. So I think that enacting this business license fee helps provide some revenue that starts to create the, set the conditions within Lake Stevens to improve our cannabis industry, to improve the Harper as well. So that it's a friendlier area for, for other businesses to come in as well as to clean up the smell and that we do get often complaints for in the Hartford area. So that's where I'm at on this, on this issue.
Mayor Gailey, have there been any conversations with any of the current operators about this proposed tax and how it might impact them?
So I've spoken with some on the retail side that's down in Hartford. They, they get why we're, why we're looking at it. They understand. There was a concern that some of the margins might be slim and that some of the growers may not be able to, to, it might take them over their margin.
And I guess I'm assuming that if the, if there, if the growing operation can't be sustainable with this increased fee, that, that doesn't necessarily trickle down to then not being able to also have processors and retailers here in Lake Stevens, that they would then just get their product from somewhere different? Is that, is that, am I assuming correctly, do you think?
That's, that's correct. And what I would ask the council to do, not only in, in doing this business license fee, but I would also ask the council to relook at the decision that we made on June 8th, where we capped processors at 17,000. And instead say, hey, that whole, what is it, 71,000 can be grow or processors. Cause, cause for me, I would rather see us move from the grow to the processors. If you don't understand the cannabis industry, there's, the majority of cannabis is grown on the east side of the mountains. There's huge cannabis farms on the east side of the mountains. They want to process it on this side of the mountains because this is where their market is. So I would, so, so there's, if, if we lost five, 10,000, 15,000 square feet of grow and someone could bring in a processor for that, I think that Lake Stevens benefits from that because we get better jobs. We get a cleaner environment for the, for the cannabis to be processed in, and we move away from the grow side that is, that is creating the problems we have in, in Hartford.
But you, you are suggesting then that we change the definition of our square footage for the allowable uses? Is that, just to be clear?
Correct. I would like to see us, in, in June, we said 17,000 and processing 54,000 and in grows. I would like us to say either or. And that way, that way, if, that way, if a processor said, hey, you've got 15,000 square feet that freed up because some growers couldn't pay your fee. We want to take that and bring in a, a clean processing environment in Lake Stevens. I'm not saying, I'm not saying up the overall, I'm saying within the current one we have.
Just, yeah, replace the function, I guess, of the square footage that's allowed. So I apologize for being late to the party here, but I just was busy doing some things. And maybe you, in your presentation, I missed this, but why, looking at the attachment to the fees that are charged in California, why are we so much less than? Is there a rationale for why are we, in some cases, gosh sakes, 30%, 25% of what they're, kind of the markets charging in other areas?
Yeah, Gary, it's a great question. We looked at California, we looked at, we're the pioneers on this in Washington. No one else is doing this in Washington. And we, we just, we came up between six and nine as numbers that might be palatable and something to start with and something to, if, if it doesn't work, we can shift right or left on it.
Are they doing it in Colorado?
No. Not that I know of. California was the only one I could find that had the square footage.
One, but no numbers were attached to it yet. So I think they're in the same boat that we are.
Okay, nothing in Nevada either.
Not that I know of. Yeah.
So Brett, the, one of the things you mentioned was the odor. And the, the thing is, the state already has rules about the odor in grow operations and we're, it's supposed to be zero odor. And to say that a processor can have scrubbers and stuff, well, so can the grow, they're just not doing it. And, you know, so the ominous, I guess, is on our code enforcement. And that's a state code. Well, I think it's part of our code too, actually. But, you know, I just think that, you know, we can't just put that in there as a reason for this because it, they're supposed to do it anyway.
Yeah, I agree with you. And, and the, the problem we've had as a city is we haven't had the code enforcement capabilities to enforce the odor. The other problem from the growers standpoint is a lot of those buildings that they are in down in Hartford, they won't be able to capture the smell. Right? Like they're so old, those buildings are old warehouses that won't be able to, without an incredible investment in, in equipment, they're not going to be able to capture that smell in those old warehouses.
So I guess that being the case, can those users or producers be phased out for non-compliance?
They absolutely could. Right? Because, because, because this is going to be a two-pronger, right? Like we have a business license fee and then we have a new code enforcement officer who will be able to go out and, and look at code violations and start working with them to get them up to code. So it's a two-pronged approach on it.
Are we going to be able to enforce the air quality code or do we have to rely on EPA?
Russ, can you help out with that?
Yeah, no, we can definitely enforce the code on odors. We just need to get some new staff trained by the Puget Sound air quality. And then, yeah, we can definitely do that enforcement and it's just about having the, the staff power and that the reporting happens in a timely manner and that we investigate it in a timely manner.
Do we not have staff that we sent to that training already?
I believe I'm the only one left standing from that group.
You better get busy then. I know you're not very busy in other areas, so what the heck? Oh, good grief.
To, to follow up on that, Kim. So Russ is NG slated to go to that training or?
We, we haven't talked about that yet, no, but we certainly will get some staff together.
Mayor Gailey, going back to your point about wanting to combine the square footage amounts to, to allow for either processing or growing. Could we amend the ordinance tonight to include that? Or would we need to go back and there, would there need to be a different amendment? Or I mean, sorry, a different ordinance addressing that other issue?
We would need to bring that back at a regular city council meeting to do that.
We can only give them direction, we can only give them direction tonight to make the changes. We can't change it.
I guess what I'm, it could, no, 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 the ordinance, you're, that's correct. The ordinance that is in our packet is specific to the fees. Can we use that ordinance to also amend the issue around the square footage? Or do we have to do a second ordinance regarding the square footage issue?
I believe it would have to be a separate ordinance because it is a land use and zoning issue, which would be in the purview of the planning commission. So I would let our, our city attorney speak to that if the council could act and revise your ordinance from June, or if it would need to go back through the planning commission again for a full zoning review.
Well, they already sent us their, they already sent us what they thought about it and we turned that one upside down, so.
But you opted their recommendations for overall square footage for different uses?
Was the issue discussed before the planning commission, Russ?
Yes.
If, if the issue was debated and discussed before the planning commission, you don't have to bring it back. It's, we could amend the ordinance because there's been a public discussion about without sending it back to the planning commission, because they've already had it.
So I just wanted to weigh in and say I'm 100% in support of these fees and also in support of making that change to allow for either or grows or processing occurring in those.
I'm in support of that also, but I'd like to hear, I can't wait to see how you bring it back and what it actually says. I think the words are going to be important in this one because we're talking about a total of basically 71,000 feet, right? And we're going to have to put something in there. I don't want it to go the other way and have 71,000 feet of grow. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, if you're going to say either or, well, that means we could, the processors could get all mad at us and take off. Now we got 71,000 feet of grow.
And I think that's probably pretty easy if we just said there's an overall cap of 71,000 that can be used for each purpose with no more than X at any time being a grow operation. And it could be the current cap, it could be the lower cap, but I think, yeah, there's definitely a way to capture that language that you're describing.
Okay, that's why I'm interested in seeing this. So the, right now we're limited to 54,000 on producers or 53,546. And that's where we're at, right? So that would have to be the number that we would put in there under your language.
Yeah, I like, I like that, that idea, Kim.
I haven't weighed in yet. I, I would support NG.
Hey Steve, you're really spotty on your vote, on your audio.
All right, maybe I'll have to pull up. Can you hear me now?
You're in now, Verizon.
Okay, yeah, it's these dumb headphones that work hard. I had some more, like council member Jorstad and what Dotree as far as allowing flexibility with the square footage with the 71,000. And I did have a question about what code enforcement is currently taking place with the grow operations now. I mean, that's been an ongoing thing and part of our limitation was having a full-time code enforcement person. So what, what steps is she taking, if any, to address that?
None at this point. I mean, we are still complaint driven and the, the code enforcement officer has really been going through the backlog of a variety of cases right now. And we've definitely talked about in the future, becoming more proactive on lots of fronts, including the industrial, industrial area.
Thank you.
So the same could be said for the septic processor, correct?
Hey, and Gary, that, that's a great segue. I think a part of this discussion, we should talk about some ideas that have been floating around out there and you're going to see it next Tuesday as part of your bracket to do a study on, on, I forget what it's called, septicage. Kelly, help me out. Are you on here?
Septic receiving facility.
So one of the things several months ago that was brought to us, because we are taking, we did take over the old wastewater treatment facility that's down in the slough there. One of the ideas that was brought, was brought up for use on that is to, and we've talked with the owner of Evergreen Sanitation. He would love to take over that facility so that he can expand his own operations. And really it's an, it's a needed facility within this side of the county to process, I don't know what you'd call it, mobile septicage or mobile, you know, being able to dump porta potties, right? Right now, one of the, quite a bit of that goes south down to Kinkar, I think it's Tacoma. Renton, maybe it is. So one of the things that we're going to explain, we're bringing to you next Tuesday is a contract to do a study by a, some sewer specialists on what that looks like. So ideally, at the end of that, it would look like Evergreen Sanitation would be able to use the old wastewater treatment facility, which right now, which would then take them out of the Hartford area, resolve that problem of the odor in Hartford. Also free up that, that land to be able to do something else with. The other thing it does is it, it reduces the cost of transporting the sewage that they currently put in at Hartford and now has to be transported all the way over to the wastewater treatment facility that the sewer district runs. So that's also part of this discussion, I think, in that we, we do have an idea to help further clean up Hartford and the Evergreen sanitation portion of it.
Council will also be seeing some other initiatives pretty soon. One on an infrastructure analysis out there, obviously with the urban three contract. That is going to be one of the study areas that will help guide us on the economic development. All of these will be sort of implementation tools from what you had discussed at your retreat over the winter, last winter. And then probably leading to some sort of a comp plan amendment in the future.
Does anybody have any more questions about the cannabis? So the only question I have then, in light of what we have on, and, and council member Peter Saken kind of brought this up, in light of what we see from California, do you still think that the fees that we're asking for are where we should be?
All right, council member Dotree, are you asking me?
Anybody. What's your, what's your thoughts on the, on the actual fees when we have data that suggests?
Yeah.
That it could be higher, but.
You can face the public and say California's got fees anywhere ranging from, you know, you got two outliers of five and seven bucks a square foot. But I mean, the majority of these are $25 a square foot. I mean, I guess the one that says a hundred dollars per square foot is nonprofit, which I could probably understand. They probably don't make a profit at a hundred bucks a square foot, but the majority of these are 20, 20 to 30 bucks a square foot and we're at six. I mean, it seems to me that we've got to be a little more, and granted California is a higher cost state to do business in, generally speaking. But I mean, you know, we're, we're a fair factor below those fees. And I just, I, it seems like we're giving something away, I guess, is what it's perceived to me.
Well, I think that, I think that the fees that are in here to begin with are good. We're breaking new ground here. If I mean, and what the mayor had said is that, you know, they're looking at maybe their margins would be too low with, not enough with this in there, we'd lose the grow operations, which seems maybe is part of the, part of the process here. I don't mind starting here. We can always change fees.
Well, I guess, I guess two things. Our goals are, or three things. Our goals are to re-envision and enhance the Hartford area. And I guess, you know, number two, it's hard to do if you've got a producer that's, in the mayor's words, are, it's not a good situation. So you can't, for lack of a better term, chase them out of there. But at the same time, they need to comply with the regulations, regulations for air quality. If they can't, then, you know, then obviously they're forced out of there. And I guess, you know, trying to generate adequate resources to ensure that that happens. I mean, if they can't comply with our existing regulations, then no different than any other business. They kind of need to move along. Hate to say that, but that's, you know, that's the way it works.
Well, I have to agree with that. And also looking at that chart from California, it looks like the majority of them are at $15. If you were to put a Pareto chart together to show that you're going to have most of them at $15.
I guess I'd be a little bit nervous jumping in too high. Given that this is a viable small business in our community and I would hate to institute something pretty severe that where we don't really know what kind of an impact it's going to have on, on any part of the, you know, of the cannabis industry. I might, I'd really like to see us start a little lower, kind of get a sense of what the impact is going to be. And, you know, maybe in a year or two, we look at raising it higher than a dollar a year or higher than the, the cap that happens in four years. But I don't, I'm not supportive of jumping in with a super high fee to begin with.
I have to agree. I have to agree.
Yeah. So council member Jor said a question for you. When you say not jumping in super high, what, are you comfortable with the current six to nine tiered approach? Is that?
I'm comfortable with that unless, you know, in a year or two, we see that the industry could absorb a higher fee or if we see that the costs are exceeding what we anticipate them to be, or we need additional revenue for oversight. I mean, I think it's, we can revisit it. I wouldn't want to start any higher than $6 currently.
Council member Dickinson?
Yes, I have to agree with the, starting at the $6. Because yes, this is a small business here in our city and I feel we need to honor them for the work they do. I hope they can clean up their odor issues for sure. But, and yes, come back, look at it again, see, see what. and yes, come back, look at it again. See, see what we think after we make that effort.
I mean, I don't know. I don't, maybe I'm, I'm wrong and there's more information. We don't know a lot about California's cannabis industry and how those, why those fees are chosen and what the makeup of that, those businesses look like. And I guess, I don't know that we're comparing apples to apples. So I wouldn't want to base it on that.
Do we have any information on what similar fees are more locally?
Or the first ones.
You already talked about it. Too late.
For the first ones.
I'm just asking a question. I, I recognize that I was, I'm in the wrong. I'm just going to ask the question and I will be quiet now.
So, so Sean, we're the, we would be the pioneers in Washington on this, on this fee.
It seems like California is the only one that has it. That they can find Nevada, Colorado, Oregon. They didn't find any others.
I want to echo what Ari and Angie said about the fees. I would, I would rather err on the side of starting low, especially in light of legislative action, both federally and at a state level with regard to cannabis. If we have a price point that is excessive, you know, it could drive people to other cities. And it would be nice if we were able to keep, you know, the revenue for the city of Lake Stevens in addition to having the jobs.
Well, I would encourage some higher fees. I just looking at the chart here, Councilmember Dotree, there's only six of these cities. They're fifteen dollars. There's twelve of them that are twenty five bucks and higher. I, I, I mean, I agree with all the comments. The problem is none of us know enough about this industry to make a valid decision. And so we're just kind of guessing.
Well, I wonder if some of these fees, the fees that we're seeing in California have anything to do with, if it's just about the cannabis in California, or is it about the entire economic structure of California where everything is higher? You know, you understand what I'm trying to say? I mean, are the prices of cannabis at the end higher than they are here in Washington to the end user? We don't know. I don't know that. I don't even know what they are here. I, you know, I'm not interested in knowing that, to tell you the truth. I'm not going in there to purchase anything. So so I don't know if it's that, or if it's.
What?
I'm at a quandary here.
I guess when you, when everyone says let's revisit this, what, how, what is the justification or what is the valuation for re-looking at this? I mean, if we, we come back a year from now and we say what, we don't look at their books. We don't know how much money they're making or losing. We don't know really any more than what we do today.
I disagree. I think that after a year, we'll be able to see what revenue we've generated and how we've been able to use that revenue to address some of the issues. But we'll also be able to see if the industry has been able to stay solvent in Lake Stevens. So if, you know, I think there's several different scenarios, right? They could be still doing a booming business. We could still have a lot of problems and we that to justify an increase in the rate. We may see that some have had to go out of business because they couldn't afford the rate. And the others have been able to address their issues. And so we may stick with the current plan. I mean, I guess, I think time gives us some good information to make a different decision or not.
One thing I wanted to direct council's attention to, if you look in the, the notes section, there are at least five of the jurisdictions that come in with higher starting fees that actually have fairly low caps between three and five thousand, where you'd have the, the higher fee on that first section, and then it goes down to a fee predominantly of about ten dollars per square foot over that. So that's, I think, another way they've controlled overall cost on that industry.
What are you talking about? I don't see that.
On your comparison table, exhibit two, attachment two, if you look in the column that says notes.
Okay.
There's Colinga, California, Desert Hot Springs, Fillmore, California, Grover Beach, King City, all have a structure that they started a higher fee and then anything over that assessed square footage goes down to similar to our top end range.
All right. And, but we don't know or any of these fees are readjusted on an annual basis or every three years or anything of that sort, correct? Where they're just fees that we kind of picked out and.
Except Bellflower, Bellflower, California starts at fifteen and has a two dollar and fifty cent increase per year. Salinas, California doesn't say how much it rises, but also does go from fifteen to twenty five dollars over a period of time. So.
So, I mean, obviously we have a chart that's six, seven, eight and nine. Most of these fees start significantly higher in California. I mean, there's plenty of room between the two. You know, I also think there's probably some truth between the cost of living to some degree being higher in California, though, having lived both here in California. The cost of living outside of being a property owner is probably negligible in, in many cases. Would there be any appetite, it, it just nudging them in order up and sort of closing the gap? I, I think that I, I think the other thing is we, we to, to Gary's point, I think going into this, if we're going to set any price point in this with the intent of looking at it a year from now or two years from now, whatever it is. I think we kind of need to, one, I think we, we have to commit to a bit of a learning curve here to knowing more about the market forces. And what does a survivable business, what does a successful business look like? What are the profit points that are, are kind of expected with a business license? You know, in, in, in my regulatory role, I could tell you if we try, anytime there's any discussion about a permit fee going up, if it's five dollars, the instant, the instant response is that this is going to put businesses out of business and everyone is going to run away. And I'm thinking about this rationally all the time and saying, you know, if five dollars is your profit margin for being in business, you probably shouldn't be in business. So I, I think there's more for us to know here. Regardless of whether or not we go with this chart or set the fees higher to really be able to make a future decision on what an increase would look like or, or a decrease. And there's also some consideration as to, are we trying to recover costs versus generate revenue? So I, I, I think both of those things need to come into play here. I, I would certainly support if we wanted to start at nine and go up from there. It's, it's not a a significant increase from where we are. But it does close the gap on the chart that, that has so many cities at the fifteen dollar price point without actually getting there. So I would just offer all of that for consideration. Now, now kind of being caught up.
You know, and I think one of the things that, that I looked at when we originally were looking at this six through nine is, is one, what we were going to use it to pay for, right? The code enforcement officer in improvements to Hartford. And at four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think that that is a justifiable revenue increase to produce those results. And so that's, I think that's where we got that six dollar was, hey, we could pay for our code enforcement officer and put, you know, three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand towards improving what that industry is impacting in Hartford. So, so I suppose, I suppose we could play with those numbers. What's, what's the impact? And are we at that with six dollars or seven dollars or eight dollars, whatever that might be?
And, and what is the, what is the point at which we're putting our current businesses out of business? I mean, I do, I mean, I think that, Sean, you bring up a great point, like five bucks, if, if that's going to, if that's going to, you know, five dollars a square foot pushes you over the edge, maybe your business plan isn't as solid as it could be. But, but there is a number, right, that, that makes it not, not possible for them to stay here, or it makes, you know, or something else more attractive. So how do we find that sweet spot, I guess?
And I'm, I'm certainly not, I'm not opposed to the numbers as written. I mean, these have been the numbers that we've looked at in this conversation theoretically, the whole time. And if they, if they meet the need, then certainly the way to support businesses is not over, overcharging a business license fee. And it sounds like the mayor's done, done his due diligence on that. So I, I can support, certainly support those numbers as, as drafted. I'm, I'm just trying to look for the happy medium between the concerns of what we're seeing in the data from California versus what we have presented in front of us.
I wonder. Sorry. No, you can finish.
I was, I was just repeating myself in that circular way that I always do. I, I, I certainly don't have any problem supporting the numbers as drafted.
I wonder if what we do is we start at the number that supports our needs. The number that we've come up with and we don't, I, we don't define what the increases look like, that we, that we say we're going to commit to this amount for this next year. And we're going to use that year to gather information and gather data and look at what happens with our industry and look at what happens, you know, potentially other Washington cities are thinking about doing the same thing. And then we revisit this in a year. And then we determine, oh, actually, this is exactly where we want to stay. Or, oh, wow, we really could support, these industries could support fifteen dollars a square foot or whatever. But, but I just, I mean, I do agree with Gary in that we don't, we don't know what we don't know and enacting a fee that meets our needs now, using this time to figure that out. Maybe that's the way to go.
So I'm having a little problem here. Okay. So Brett, let's just, let's just, I got a question for you. Do we know that we're at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of we need this to mitigate what's happening down at Hartford based on what they are, this particular business is doing?
Kim, I don't have hard numbers on it. I've got, I've got, you know, my thought process is we can pay for the code enforcement officer, leaves three hundred and fifty thousand leftover increasing to be able to do those infrastructure projects that we know we need to start doing down in Hartford. And I consider that as that, that cannabis industry share towards that, towards those infrastructure projects.
Okay. So here's, here's my issue. My issue is, is that we are targeting a business for a fee that isn't going to be targeted to anybody else. So we're singular, singularly, or we're singling, what am I trying to say? We are pointing to one industry, one business, one legal business and saying that we're going to up your fees because we need money to play in Hartford.
No, I don't think that that's what we're saying. We're saying we're going to up your fees because your industry provides a, a unfriendly climate to, to, to people on the, on the trail, to other businesses. I think that's.
So we could have said the same thing about Evergreen.
And, and we are, I think we are. And that's why we're looking for another solution for Evergreen.
No, I understand. But what if that solution didn't exist? Were we, what are we going to look at upping their business fees because of the odor issues we always have with them?
Valid point.
Well, that, that's the only thing I'm, that's the only thing I'm worried about is you're looking at, you know, we're I, I, I get it. I get that, that the particular industry we're talking about causes issues. I got that. To be, I'm struggling with, we have this one, I don't think that we should be making revenue off of it. It shouldn't be a revenue stream. It should be paying for the problems that, that exist from that industry and the code enforcement officer. Because we need the code enforcement officer to help do all that. But I don't see, you know, starting out at twenty five dollars and that's way more than we would need to take care of the problems that they have. The, the other, the flip side of that is looking at from their point of view is, okay, you want me to make this building so it doesn't have odor. But now you're taking money from me and now I don't have that money to help me get to the odor free designation that I have to have. So it, I mean, they're in a lose, lose situation there. They are. So I, I agree with having the fees. I don't necessarily agree that we need to go higher than what we've already determined right now. I'm kind of like in Angie and Sean's camp there saying that we could start out at six or seven or eight or whatever we determine. But I'm, I'm hesitant to say that we could use this as a revenue stream to fix Hartford.
Would, would I be so bold to ask as to maybe we could place a couple of phone calls to a couple of these cities and say, why is your fee at twenty five bucks a square foot? I mean, I, I appreciate your comments, Kim. I mean, that makes total sense. And I, I agree with that. We probably should have been doing something with Evergreen Sanitation. You know, a few years back. However, I just, there's got to be a justification for why these cities in California are charging twenty five bucks a foot.
And there may be, and we don't know that. And I think you're right. We should call and find out. And that, and that's what I'm really looking for is I'm looking for that justification. To, I don't like pulling numbers out of the air.
I, I agree.
Military here, I would have said something else, but you know, just pulling the, just pulling it out of the air. And, and I'm not, I know it wasn't just pulled out of the air. I know you, you thought about it and, you know, with what information you had, the staff and Brett, I understand that. But at the same time, you know, I got to put my businessman hat on and look at it from their point of view and why, why would I want to be in a place where I am paying for the Hartford upgrades when I only really am doing this amount of heartache to Hartford?
And, and to further add to that, and I'll not pronounce this correctly, but San Joaquinto, California has five different sets of fees for five different activities. Why are they different?
I think you'll have to ask more questions than just why is the fee the way it is? I, I'm, I'm I just done a super quick Google search while we've been talking and it looks like their industry looks a lot different than ours. There's, there's a nonprofit sort of component to their industry that it doesn't look like that we have. And one of the unintended consequences of these fees is the increase in illegal, illegally grown marijuana throughout the state. Not that Lake Stevens imposing a fee is going to have that impact in Washington state, but I do think, you know, there are potential negative consequences that are, that we can't see. I, Kim, I really like, and Councilman Dotree, I really like your point about covering our costs and, and we have some unmet needs that this industry is creating and we have an opportunity to meet those needs. That feels like the right place to start and the right position to take versus looking at how we can in, you know, have the most revenue possible. So I, I guess I just want to reiterate. It seems like we know a bit about what the costs are. We have a way to meet those costs with this initial six dollar square foot fee. That seems really reasonable.
Well, it does seem reasonable, but I also think that we ought to go forward and have staff contact. Well, it does seem reasonable, but I also think that we ought to go forward and have staff contact some of these cities and find out whether they're basing this stuff on. I mean, if it's just because we can, well, yeah, I get that, but. You know, just because you can doesn't make it right. But I, you know, covering our costs, that's one thing. But getting additional revenue to be able to do other things just from on, based on one industry, I'm not so sure that that's a, a fair business practice. You know, we got other industries that are going to come in and say, well, what are they going to do to me now?
Well, Kim, we've already done that. I mean, we've put a hard cap on marijuana, but we haven't put a cap on alcohol. Um establishments with Lake Stevens. We haven't put a cap on breweries. We haven't put a cap on people who serve alcohol. So if we're going to target one legal business. You know, um, where are we leaving alcohol to the question? So, um, I know it's kind of a, a different topic, um, but I think it's in a similar vein. You know, as far as picking winners and losers and just because you can, doesn't mean you should. So I think erring on the side, uh, from a. I, I, I'm supportive of Councilmember Jorstad, Angie's position, um, on that. I, I think it's, uh. A good thought process. We start out at a lower price. And what you have said, Kim, to address our needs and, and move from there. We keep forgetting the fact that marijuana is going to be legal. Charles Schumer has talked about legalizing it by the end of the year. There's stuff going on the legislature to make that happen here in Washington state. Um, so if we think we've got this big pot that we're going to have of money. When, if we choose to set it at an unreasonable rate. Because we think we're going to get this big amount of revenue, um, it could just cause people to go to Marysville or Snohomish or unincorporated Snohomish County. And set up shop and do business without those fees.
Well, that also might be one of our goals. I mean, you want, you want to get rid of the grow operation because they can't meet their odor things. I mean, if that's one of the goals and I, you know, I get that. It wasn't stated implicitly, but it was. You know, if they can't do it, then they could, you know, leave and get better, better building. I mean, my observation of that is that, you know, they came into this knowing that what the rules were and they. Got into a building that they couldn't make the rules work. I think that's on them. So. I'd, I'd like to hear what you find out if the staff, if we want the staff to go and find out what's going on in California and why they think they can charge those. And what are they basing those charges on? I'd like to know that piece of information. I don't have a problem starting at the, on the chart that we have. Or even just saying, let's start at ten dollars and work our way up from there. I, but I wouldn't want to go higher than that right now. And I do have reservations about picking on a business type. But I understand it. Uh, this particular one I understand. And, uh, Councilmember Ying, you opened up a huge can. It's a number ten, ten can of worms there. So, yeah, I, I get it. I understand. And that's what I don't want to go. And we need to be a business friendly, we need to be a business friendly city, period. And I, I don't want this to spill over to anything else.
Well, as you mentioned that, Kim, I mean, I go to these openings, um, of the different businesses that we have here in the city. And the last several that I've been to served alcohol. And I'll just mention that all of them have said how easy to work with the city is, how friendly and welcoming the staff and the community has been. And I'd like to continue to maintain that, um, and be balanced in our approach and what we do. Um, yeah, I've talked to a business owner here. He wants to add another brewery here in the city. You know, if we treated alcohol the same way we're treating marijuana, but artificial caps on it. Um, that business owner who's got a reputable, solid business that people patronize and is doing great business. I don't have to patronize it to allow that, those business owners to, to prosper. Um, and so I think we just need to have a, a broad perspective. And not, uh, we should be reticent to. Be overtly picking winners and losers in certain industries.
Okay, so, so here's what we'll do on this. Um, we'll get a, a real small synopsis report done out of why California looks like it does. And you get it back to you and, um, and then we'll just, if, if everyone's okay with it, we'll bring this forward as a, uh, as an action item and. See where it goes.
All right. No more discussion on that one. Let's go to the council retreat topics.
Councilmember Dotch, would it be helpful if I brought them up on the screen?
Uh, more than likely, yes.
Okay. Let me do that and then. So these are the topics that were in your packet. Um, I just thought maybe for transparency, it'd be nice for people to see what the topics that you're looking at. So.
Okay, so we have a retreat coming up in August. These are the topics that we want, that have been put in there by other, by different people. I don't know if any of you had put any in, in or not. I put in a couple. So I guess the first question I have for the council is. What do you think of these? Are there any that we don't want to discuss? Of this list, is there none that, you know, this doesn't really make it on a, a short, uh, day long. Meeting or whatever. I mean, you know, is there something that's a no-go for this time or we can put off? Or do we want to talk about every one of these?
Can I ask, can I get some clarification? I, um, a couple of things that came to mind that I would be interested in maybe under some of these headings. So, um, wanted to hear about, uh, pro, any progress with the city of Everett. And the water line and just the entire highway, um. Twentieth Street retail sort of plan. Is that already? Would that fall under future growth? Potentially? Or is that its own separate topic?
Russ, what do you think about that?
I think additionally, I was thinking about, um, just wanting an update about Costco and the timeline and. Is that also?
I think we can get that updated in just a council meeting. We don't really need to do that in a.
Great.
And at the, uh, retreat. I mean, Costco's a go. It's, it's going.
Yeah, I know. I just, I guess I, I, there were several things that kind of came to mind and I, around. What's moving forward and, and what's it looking like? And I wasn't sure if they were already under some of the proposed topics.
Councilmember, we could take just two minutes and update you on the water line if you'd like. I mean, there's nothing to update you on. There's nothing going forward. So. Uh, the city of Everett has basically put their listed demands out there and they're not very flexible. So we have been trying to work some back channels as to reasonableness, uh, or reasonable discussions. Uh, we, I think the folks that have, um, communicated to Everett on this issue. Think we have a regional position and their position is. In the category of very unreasonable. And so we're just kind of sitting here. So. That would be the update on that.
Is there more conversation to be had around how that impacts the, the sort of our plans around the twentieth? Street Southeast development. I guess, and that doesn't, we don't need, I don't want to talk about that tonight. I, I'm putting that out there because I'm wondering if that's a retreat conversation.
Of the future growth is more to talk about, you know, where we're at with. Buildable lands reporting, growth projections, and then ultimately what does that mean to? Proposed UGA expansions, but it definitely could be a report card in our, our sub areas and what we're seeing. Okay. Which I think we could say future growth of downtown has been strong since the plan was adopted. Frontier Village has been strong, um, new commercial growth, Sober Hill area is strong. Twentieth Street aside from Costco, uh, tepid, you know?
Okay.
But I think what I'm hearing from Angie, and tell me if I'm wrong, and I support her if I'm understanding her correctly, is that economic development is really. A significant part of what we need to do. Um, and have happened in our city without which we don't have the resources to make a lot of these other things happen. Um, and so something that targets economic development. If that's what, um, Angie, you were talking about, that is something that I would like to. Bring in here because many of these other things that we're talking about, um, are going to require revenue. And, um, as we see permit fees reducing. You know, we're going to see a reduction in our overall budget, um, as a result. You know, the buildable lands, um, that we have available for commercial and residential construction. So we need to really focus on and be laser focused on. Um, capitalizing on available opportunities that are, that are within our city.
You know, something I'd like to see added on here is a continuation of the discussion we had on. Where we see ninety first, the vision of ninety first that we had, we talked about back in January, February. What does ninety first look like after the nine, two, or four project is done in a couple of years? I'd like to be able to continue that.
Okay, so one of the other things I see here, it would go ahead and add that. One of the other things I see here is you got number five and number one are basically the same thing. We could put them under one topic.
I think it'd be helpful to see this list with like a, um, kind of an estimated. Idea of how much time needs to be dedicated because I think it's hard for me to look at this list and know. Is this a five-minute update? Is this a half an hour discussion? So it's hard, so given that, Kim, it's hard, um, Councilman Dotch, it's hard for me to then say, oh, we should definitely. Keep this or not keep this. Like, to me, everything looks important, but I don't know if everything needs an hour and therefore. We're not having an eleven-hour retreat, so we need to cut some things.
All right, so let's go a little bit different tact then. Do you have, is, does anybody have anything that they want to talk about? Other than economic development that it's already been brought up and what's going on on, on Twentieth Street Southeast Corridor. I, I understand those two. Does anybody else have anything that they see missing that they think is important for a mid-year retreat?
I do have a question, um, and Angie, if you could refresh my memory, at our first retreat, you mentioned something that I really liked. And I don't want to misrepresent it, but you talked about like a holistic staffing review. Um, of all the departments to kind of see where things are at. Um, and I don't know that we have really adequately acted on that. I thought that was a really thoughtful concern that you shared. So I don't know, and if you can shed some more light on that, help me understand because I don't have my notes in front of me on that, from that meeting.
I felt like during the budget process last fall that each of the departments did. I, I think put some work into presenting information to us about what they felt like they needed to. Uh, meet the need in their department. And I think that we incorporated some of those requests into the budget. But it would be nice to know, you know, six months into this year. Um, and given that we've done some growing, um, if staffing still seems to be keeping up with the need. But I guess I, I wondered if that was already covered under number six.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. It's covered under that. There's some.
Yep.
There is some other things that are going to be coming to light under there that is new and interesting. But, um, but that's what the staffing plan update is for, is to tell us where we were, where we went and where we're going to need to go.
Excellent.
Right, Anya?
Yes, correct.
Good. Boy, I got that one right.
Last retreat, um, like we spent an hour on it before, so we figured it, and that one might be another hour to talk about, you know. Revisit the org charts where we were last year, where we are now, and you know, what we would request for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget.
So all of these basically that you see before us are actually going to lead into the budget priorities going into twenty twenty-two and beyond. Um, you know, we need to be looking at. We've got, you know, there's a lot of things here, there's a lot of things we want to do, but we still only have a, a finite amount of financing coming in or, or revenue coming in. So we're going to need to prioritize as we always do. We, we need to prioritize everything. So. Uh, that's one of the things we're going to want to leave there with, I believe, is a prioritization for budget. Because the staff is getting ready to start into the budget process. So this is almost a kickoff for that.
Is item number seven being proposed for folks that want to? Uh, participate in that or what? I don't.
No, they're going to give us an update on how the Six Sigma, uh, training and, uh, operations are going. And how it's affecting the city.
Yeah, so it'd be like a project update, some of the projects that folks are doing and just to let council know.
I would just say we can easily move that one to, to a council meeting or workshop in the future. So that one's probably easy to move. If some of these other ones are going to take priority, I'd say, because we're still working on our projects. And I just thought it'd be a good time to maybe give you guys another update since the last time we talked about it was June. But I think we could push it out as well. So that could be easily, um, moved.
I just past experience, it seems like we load these retreats up with things and then we kind of cram and jam and so forth. I, I guess I'd rather see less items on there and do a thorough discussion of those versus trying to put, you know, a ton of things on the agenda.
Okay.
Would the retreat be a time to get an update on the Citizens Advisory Council or is that more of a, um, council meeting? Topic.
I think that's more of a council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, senior center, this is for the growth of the senior center, I take it. Uh, Councilmember Dickinson, did you put that one on there?
I think I did, yes, but, um. Yeah, yeah, I had some questions about what next steps for the senior center because. Of what's going to be happening down the road. Gen Care is going to go in one day and. Senior Center is going to have a lot more people coming into the senior center. Uh, and I think that was, and I did talk to, um. Russ Wright and Jill Meese about Eagle Ridge and how that's going to impact the senior center. So. Um, I'm not sure, you know, maybe we can wait on that because it's nothing pending at this point. Nothing's going to happen for at least a year. Maybe we, I'm, you know, as far as I'm concerned, unless there's something else that somebody else knows something about, maybe we can. Rethink that one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the input. Russ, is there anything in the works on the senior center? I mean, staff, is that on even radar, on the radar of the staff right now?
It, it's really not. I mean, there have been some. Discussions from time to time about the desire to see an expanded center, but there's no push for any capital project at this point.
So, uh, Councilmember Dickinson, I'm going to propose that we put that off to a workshop and maybe get some, uh, get some information put together for it. Uh, so we have, instead of just a. Out of the blue topic that we can start talking about at this particular retreat. Maybe we can start on a workshop down the road a little ways. And maybe start getting some information together about it, including input from the senior center.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
Is that okay with you then?
Absolutely.
All right, so, um, let's go ahead and take that particular topic off of our agenda for. For that. Five and one are the same, future growth. We already talked about staffing plan update. Uh, let's go ahead and move the Six Sigma update to a workshop. If you don't mind, Anya. By the way, everybody, I am a very big proponent of Six Sigma and Lean. That's what I did for a long time. The Hartford industrial area, I think, is very important to us and I will tell you that, uh, the parks brief and everything about parks is going to be our main focus. I think of this entire. Uh, not the entire time, but it's a very big focus role we need to be talking about at this retreat. Anything else from anybody else that you want to put on there? I haven't heard from Councilmember Frederick or Councilmember Ewing. Councilmember Peter Sagan, anything, Peter Sagan, anything you want to put on there?
I, I would say, and I, I can't see Councilmember Peter Shagan, so if I cut you off, I apologize. Um, I would just say that, uh, continuing the conversation about what the Hartford industrial area looks like. And, um, the conversation around developing a parks department are kind of really important ones for me. Individually, I think that they're, they're really important. So they're both here, which is why you haven't heard from me. I do agree. I do agree with combining one and five and moving some items that can be better served at a future workshop or agenda item. So I think, I think all the conversation has been great so far.
Okay.
I would only add, I would support putting the Ninety Fourth Street visioning process or improvements on this list.
Ninety, ninety first street?
Yes.
Okay.
The fronty road there between Higgins and Ace and all that stuff.
And I will just throw out that that is part of the urban three analysis. So until they're completed with their work, we may not really be ready to bring next visioning steps to council till we really see what the economic segments are they're looking at. So that might be something you you push off to a later meeting and both that and the Hartford is that's part of their their scope of work.
Well, we certainly don't want to lose sight of it, that's for sure. All right. Anything else? Anybody have anything that I'm missing? Okay. Let's go ahead and have that down for our agenda then. If anything does come up and you think of anything, please let me know or let Kelly know or the mayor, one of the three of us. Barb, did you have something you wanted to say?
I I did. I just wanted to sort of piggyback off what you said about the beginning of the budget process. And we've kind of talked about that this morning, that this is generally a good time to give council an update on where we are financially. So I would like to do a quick middle of the year update at the council retreat and then kind of get started into the budget thought process and get your priorities for twenty twenty two, so that we can actually then start into the budget process. So we generally do that in the in the council retreat process right around this time of year, so it fits in pretty well. And you'd kind of mentioned that already, Councilmember Daughtry, so I just wanted to make sure that was actually added to the list.
Okay, let's go ahead and add that. I'd like that to be the first thing we talk about. That way we have a good starting point on where our finances are and we can, you know, have that in the back of our head while we're talking. Does everybody agree with that? Okay, we'll start with that, Barb. Thank you. I appreciate your input on that. All right, any other questions about the retreat? Go ahead, Sean, I mean, Councilmember Frederick.
I was actually, it's actually a question for Barb, since she's going to do an update on where we are mid-year. It's also the time of the year where lots of municipalities are beginning the pre-audit and audit phases of the financial year as well, and just wondering if there'd be an opportunity to have an update on any progress in that regard, along with the financial position.
Yeah, so far we haven't, we've been contacted by the auditors as they're setting up the schedule. But we normally get our audit later in the year, generally October, November, which we'll probably do again this year since I don't have a finance manager yet. And so I'll probably ask them to push it out and not schedule us for August. Although we will have a single audit this year since we got Cares money, so that'll be a new thing for us.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on retreat? Okay, so the last thing is not on the agenda for tonight, but I do want to say that we are going to have our next council meeting will be in person at the mill, so that's next week, right, next week?
Hey, Kim, can we have a discussion on that? Staff brought up some points that we need to think about.
Oh, wait a minute, we already made a decision and now you're going to do, oh, here we go again. Okay, so staff, go ahead and tell us what the problems are with meeting in person.
Anya, you want that?
Sure, I can start. Not problem, but I think there's the concern about masking. So right now we have our policy for the employee side for all city staff is that we are requiring masks regardless of vaccination status. And so.
And why are we, why are we requiring that?
That's the policy that we created because we did not want to get any vaccination attestations or vaccine, proof of vaccination from our employees. So that was the other choice that we made. So that just, it just, it it's not problematic necessarily. It just means that the staff are going to be required to be masked because that's our policy. And then we would have citizens also coming in and in the public. They, we're not requiring them to have masks necessarily, but I believe we could make that a requirement if we chose to. But I just wanted to throw that out there when we're considering coming back to in person. And then Kelly, you might have to remind me about our other concern as well.
I think just the fact that we really be running a virtual meeting as well as an in-person meeting in a hybrid situation, which we haven't had a lot of practice doing at the mill and trying to pull that together next week. I, you know, we'll, we'll do some mock meetings and definitely go that way if that's where the council wants to go. But I think it's just that the requirement of having both, running both of the meetings would be a little difficult.
I've been to a couple hybrid meetings just in the last couple of weeks. And yeah, there's, there's definitely a lot more to kind of figure out. Can I just, just a point of clarification, Anya, I'm assuming when you say all city staff are required to wear masks, that would include city council?
Well, I was wondering that and I didn't have a chance to talk to Greg about that, but you know, I'm not sure. I think the city council and the mayor have to follow our employee policies, but then also your elected officials. So. Greg?
Well, well, they don't directly fall under, I believe, the LNI rule. It talks about employees, I guess. We could ask them whether, how they're interpreting that rule. I mean, because we do pay, don't we pay LNI for, for public officials? And that may bring, that may bring them under, so maybe we ought to check with them, just to see how they.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think also if I could just say is I, I'd like this, you know, I want the meeting to be as flawless as possible and go well. And I think just trying to pull that together next week just concerns me a little bit. But certainly if that's the way you guys want to go, we'll, we'll do some mock meetings and and give it our best, best shot.
Why, is there a, is there a, like an urgency, I guess, to have next, because next week's our last meeting, right, before the break? So to have to have next meeting in person versus waiting until after the break, which I'm guessing Kelly would give you a bit more time than to kind of figure out the hybrid model.
Exactly, or, you know, time for the governor to possibly lift the requirement to have it virtually. A lot of things could change in the last, in the next six weeks, so. I'm not, I, yeah, I don't want to speak to the urgency, maybe the mayor or Councilman Daughtry want to speak to that.
So the, so what do you mean? I thought that he lifted everything. He's still maintaining it, we're going to do virtual meetings?
Yeah, have to do virtual is how I understand it, and then the choice about a hybrid in person is is up to us.
Okay, so. My question is, the school board, I attended a school board meeting recently, it was a hybrid, public comment was in person. And, but they were streaming it to whoever wanted to to do it remotely. And so is that the plan, if we were to go forward with this, that we'd have public comment in person and that anyone that wanted to could still tune in remotely?
I think that could definitely be your decision. I did talk with the school board, they've never allowed public comment via Zoom. So that wasn't a practice that they had switched. They had always, well, when they were a hundred percent Zoom, they just had people emailing their comments and then they were read into the record. So we'd be moving things a little bit if we said, okay, you can't do it via Zoom, you can only do it in person. So.
So community transit, we've already started doing hybrid. We are very limited on how many people could be in the room and they all have to be masked. But we do take public comment over Zoom and emails and any other way they want to do it. So that's one way that the community transit is doing it. The reason that we're still masked is because of federal mandates, not because of Governor Inslee. At least that's the way we look at it. And so there's a federal mandate for everything for transit. And then there's also one from the state that you're talking about from. Yeah, LNI, so until, and they haven't relaxed that yet. So.
Well, I'll tell you, I would recommend that we remain on Zoom for this next Tuesday. Because then we go on break till the end of August. And hopefully by then the LNI restrictions will be rescinded and we won't have these issues.
I agree.
Me too, I agree.
I, I agree.
No insider info, Sean?
I'm actually reading the, I'm actually reading the June thirtieth, LNI requirements and guidance for COVID nineteen. And you know, the second bullet is verifying vaccination status before lifting employee mask requirements. So I think the first concern that everyone is, would have to wear a mask because there is no process currently in place to verify or have employees attest that they have been vaccinated and are symptom free. Kind of creates a problem for the general flow of a meeting, just realizing that wearing a mask can inhibit how easy it is to hear testimony. You would have to have those same guidelines in effect for anyone entering any of the facilities to make sure they were masked as well. And then there's the, the whole conflict that because there isn't an attestation system in place and there is also no specific masking mandate outside of employers. There's a potential there for conflict at the point where the public would be coming into the building.
Yeah, a lot of jurisdictions are having masked and unmasked sections for their hybrid meetings and that's permitted. So the public can sit where they're comfortable, either in a mass section or.
Sorry, I'd love to get back to in-person meetings.
Thank you.
It is complicated, right?
Right, Councilmember Ewing, you haven't said anything yet.
Well, I think the decisions are already made, there's, everyone's in support of waiting till. So I, I think that's great that we wait till August, now we have the meeting and we can wait for more guidance and input.
All right, Councilmember Peter Sagan, I already know your answer. You want to do it, so I think I want to do it also, but I think you're right. It might be best if we wait one more time and go to the end of August and make sure all are ducks in a row and give the staff time to try to mock up a, a city council meeting with Zoom and everything else. Because I believe that we're going to do that anyway. I think, I think we owe it to the public to do it from now on. Most jurisdictions are going to, that I've talked to, so we do need to get good at that.
Yeah, and this is Troy. Yeah, I have a statement of work for some improvements to the AV system that are still pending, pending to be approved to get that work done, that address some issues that we've experienced with that. So, and we're kind of waiting to see how the funding for the American Recovery Act funds come into play too. So giving us a little bit extra time to try to work that out is going to be huge.
Okay, the Troy, the funding mechanism that you're talking about, are you saying that the council has to vote for those funds or are those just things that, because if we're not meeting until the end of August?
Yeah, yeah, it's, we, we, we feel as though that the American Recovery Act funds will be able to cover the cost to perform some of the upgrades on there, on the environment. And I'm just kind of waiting to kind of get approval from, from Barb and from, you know, Jean to be able to pull the trigger on that statement of work. It's something that was outside of our budget to, to be able to do. It's about, it's about twenty thousand dollars. So it's either, you know, we kind of try to put out an amendment to get that done outside of that. Sorry about that.
We guess we know how the dogs feel about it.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that, like I said, there are, there are some, and then there's some other benefits that actually tie into just how that, that facility overall functions for the rental facilities. So we've got two additional iPads to control how the AV system is controlled in that room. So there's just some other augmentations for that statement of work that we, we really want to get done. And I think that's going to help facilitate our in-person hybrid, you know, environment, so.
All right, I guess we're going to do Zoom for one more time.
Yeah.
And Kim, we got one more topic, quick one, promise.
First, I have to apologize to Councilmember Peter Sagan for lying to him, so. Because I told him, no matter what, we're going to have a meeting.
We're going to get there, we're going to get there.
So now I'm going to blame Anya and Kelly on that one, so.
That's what I did, that's what I did.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm going to have to learn from you.
Hey, so real quick, the fireworks vote that's coming up, it needs to have three people to write a pro and a three people to write a con statement. Those people need to be identified before August third, which is in the middle of our recess. My recommendation is that we put out an ask for those three people via our website, social media, that kind of stuff. Take in those names and then myself, Kim and Gary would decide the threes on each side and submit them to the county. The other option would be we hold a meeting in the middle of your recess to have the council vote on it.
So how did you decide on Kim and Gary as the people to help you?
President, Vice President, and they're relatively good-looking guys.
Sean's Councilman. Sean's the Vice President.
Oh, Sean, what the heck? All right, well, we can go Sean, we can go Sean. I don't even know who I'm working with anymore.
Sounds like a recall's in order.
Well, we can go, we can go Kim and Sean then.
Is that, would, would it be three people writing three different opinions? Or those three people come together to write one pro and one con? Got it, okay. I'm, I feel supportive of Kim and Sean and Brett making that decision.
Yeah, and in fact, you're also going to decide who's going to be the chair of each of the groups, and then they're going to get together on their own and, and then submit to the county.
Sounds good.
I also support, I also support the council president and vice president with that.
I support that as well.
Yeah.
Me too.
Thank you. I'm going to, I want to go ahead and get that out, that recruitment notice out tomorrow morning, so.
That's a good idea. We're going to need as much time as we can on that, so.
That's all I have.
Okay, that's it. And all right, so we have a meeting next Tuesday. Jean, did you have anything to add to the melee that we just did?
I do not. Just a reminder, the retreat is at El Precio in Monroe in their boardroom. And they were kind enough to donate that facility to us.
Great. All right, I guess we'll see you next Tuesday night for our last meeting, free for the break. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Night, guys.